Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the July 13, 2020 meeting?
Don't move.
Any second? Second by Charles. All in favor just indicate by saying yay or raise your hand probably easiest.
Yay.
Yay. It's unanimous. Okay. I don't know if we're ready to start the public hearing yet because I don't think we have a petitioner yet.
You have three attendees. Do you see them Bethany?
Yep. Can you bring Fran? He's one of the board members.
Yes.
And then I believe Harry and possibly the other person are the petitioners.
Okay, so I'm bringing them in.
Yep.
Is Fran in at this point?
He's, I see his screen. I don't see his video or his audio.
Just, you know, because if we go to the other people, I want to let them know they've only got four members. It's got to be unanimous.
There he is.
If he's here, then they can get pulled out of five.
Fran is here. Mark.
Okay, okay, good.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's Mr. Kenny.
Okay, so, well, we've got five members. So in either event, I think, Dan, are you the alternative piece show?
I'm not an alternate member as far as I know. I'm a regular.
James is, okay, so James, you know, will be at the meeting but won't be voting if Fran is here.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Yeah, I can hear you from here. Thank you. So you're here. Okay. Yep. So I don't know, are the petitioners here at this point?
That would be, yes, Corbin Kenny and Harry Arbuck with Agnoli Sign.
Okay, I just wanted to sort of go through the rules of the road before we open the public hearing. Whoever speaks, just give your name, address, you know, for the record before you speak. Normally, we will ask the petitioner to speak. If there's anybody in opposition, we'll ask any of those people to speak in opposition. If there's any rebuttal from the petitioner from the opposition, we would then open it up for that. During the term, board members may have questions. We have five members participating tonight. James is the alternate. He'll be participating but not voting. You need a vote of four or five of the members in order to obtain a variance. If we do grant the variance or not, either way, the variance is effective and will be recorded within a certain period of time. And once it's recorded, you have a 20-day appeal period from when it's filed with the town clerk. Either way, so if anybody's against it, they don't like our decision, they can appeal it. If the petitioner doesn't like our decision, he can appeal that in the 20-day period. I would ask to open the meeting and have someone read the minutes, or not the minutes, read the public notice.
At East Long Meadow Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in October 19, 2020 at 6:30 PM via Zoom webinar meeting link from the following. Case ZB 2020-04, petitions for variance on East Long Meadow by law as Article 5.8, signs 5.83 Business District A location for the installation of a sign above the highest line of the main roof of the building, 5.83 Business District C number for exceeding the maximum number of exterior wall signs, and 5.83 Business District B size for installation of three signs exceeding 100 square feet, each at 650 North Main Street, assessor parcel ID 1A96-2 in a business zoning district, applicant Cityline Liquors LLC 650 North Main Street, East Long Meadow. And this is on file for inspection in the Office of Planning and Community Development. It's published on 10/2 and again on 10/9.
And all that was published in the paper. And notices also went out to the butters.
That's correct.
So jurisdictionally, I think we've met all the requirements for the hearing. If the petitioner wants to make a presentation.
Certainly. My name is Harry Arbuck. I am with Agnoli Sign, 722 Worthington Street in Springfield, working with Corbin Kenny, who is the owner of the property and of the business that is there. We are petitioning the board to, let me go backwards for a second. We're not looking to add any more signs. We're looking to reconfigure. As some of you may know, there was a damage to the building and subsequently the donut dip has departed and Cityline took over the entire premises. Because of that, because of the reconfiguration, because of the damage to the building, and as I said, the reconfiguration, we need to change some signs. And starting with the first sign, if I may, the pylon sign, that is on the east Long Meadow side of the building, if you will. Originally, it was split into two, donut dip and then liquors underneath. And we're proposing to change the faces. It's the least expensive way to move forward on this project. And obviously, we are branding it with the Cityline, Cityline tagline, not tagline, but Cityline name, if you will. So that's one sign that we're seeking approval for. Should I stop and see if there's any questions or I should continue with the presentation?
I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point.
Okay. And Corbin, anything else to add there in regards to the pylon sign or should I move on?
No, the pylon sign, for those of you that know the property, as most of you probably do, by the way, Corbin Kenny, I'm the owner of Cityline Package Store 650 North Main. It is the most prominent sign up on the top of the building. It's been there since the 60s, probably. It's two-sided and from both sides, it says Cityline Liquors below it. That's all, Harry.
Yeah. And again, this is.
To discuss the signs during the process of developing this plan for the signage, we assign each of the signs a different name. So that's the pylon sign.
But the pylon sign is the one that's, as you're looking, is on East Long Meadow side along, I guess, is that North Main Street or White Street?
So actually, Mark, if you drive either way, it's, I'm trying to see myself on Zoom here.
Pole sign, correct?
The pole sign.
No, no.
Yes, Corbin, it's not the roof sign. It's.
It's the pole sign.
Step up.
No, no, you're fine. No, it's.
It deferred to the expert.
Yeah, thank you. So.
I was ahead of myself.
But that's the one that currently had or previously had donut dip at the top and liquors below.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now it's going to read Cityline Wines and Spirits 650 North Main Street.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Great. But Corbin actually does a good segue. The most prominent sign is on the building. Nothing is changing there. You can see it, you know, heading east-west. Again, that, again, nothing is changing. But the square footage kind of puts us into asking for a variance for this sign. So that, this sign being the pylon sign. The next sign is, I'm sorry. Okay, the next sign, which is if you have in your packet, what we call it Proof B, is the cold beer. And donut dip being an iconic type of sign, which is on, which was on the roof and has since been removed. We're looking again for a variance to put another iconic sign, the cold beer sign. It measures approximately the same size. And again, we realize it is a roof sign and that's why we're asking for a variance on that. And then the last sign that we're looking for a variance, which, and again, the issue here is more than enough, more than allowable number of signs, is a non-branded illuminated sign. This is on Proof C, if you will, that just calls out, you know, to the public. Again, now this is facing, let me do, is facing Springfield. So as you're heading east, you will hit it coming from North Main Street. And it just calls out some of the, some of the sales that, you know, there's fresh beer, there's wine, there's liquor and the mass lottery. So just kind of telling people what can be found at the store.
I just have a question. Is the sign going to remain the redemption center one?
The redemption's not there. It's actually moving down.
Okay, but there will be a sign for that as well?
Yes, yes. The redemption's area, correct me if I'm wrong, Corbin, excuse me, is on the Springfield side of the building.
Correct. Yeah, so Mark, when the, when the, when the donut dip was there, it was quite clear that one side was a donut dip, the other side was the package store. So the prior owner Larry had put that sign on the side simply to indicate that we did take bottle and can redemption. Now that we flipped it, well, not flipped it, but the donut dip is gone. It's now an employee entrance on that side of the building. So we don't want people to get confused, park there expecting to bring their returns into that side of the building. So we're going to take it over to the other side where the redemption center actually is and always has been. It's automatic now as opposed to manual, but it's the same location.
Right, but that's an additional sign on the building, you know, like the cold beer, fresh beer, advertising the services that are available in the building.
Well, it's an existing sign that's been.
And I understand it's being moved.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Because you're taking this fresh beer and wines and then you're also putting the cold beer. So now you have three different signs advertising, you know, solely the services that are rendered in the building.
Yeah, which is kind of the point. Rather than blast the Cityline name, which is relevant to some people, but not everybody, we're looking to make sure that everybody knows there is this service product available in East Long Meadow at the entrance to the town.
Right. But I mean, these are overall signs that are now going to be used in terms of what's there. So you have a new wall sign against facing the Springfield side that is going to advertise fresh beer, fresh fine wines, full liquor, mass lottery, correct?
Correct. That was installed as a logoed Bud Light sign, if you might recall that.
Yeah, I remember there was something there before him in terms of what's there. And so, okay, I just wanted to clarify the number of signs. That's all that we have so that it's clear. Because the petition didn't mention in the petition the redemption signs.
And that was, that would be my mistake. I guess my thought was, since it was purely informational and didn't, was not selling a product.
And I understand, but we've got to be concerned about precedent and people saying, well, look, you let them have all these other signs, plus you gave them a variance for this. And hey, you know, you know, I want to be able to put these signs. So we've got to be concerned about that.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you know, those are the now four signs, if you will, that we are asking for the board to review and, and, you know, questions, obviously, but to consider.
Just for clarification for my own benefit, is it my understanding that what is being requested is relief to permit signs previously used for departed tenant for the purposes of one of the other tenants or occupants of the building? And in addition to that, a sign that does not today exist? And that these signs that exist today are all by either special permit or previous variance? Am I, am I half right on what I just said?
Yes. Basically, everything we're doing is reusing of existing signs to, A, remove indications of the donut dip, which no longer exists, and B, indicate some reconfiguration of the building, i.e. the question Mark asked Daniel to move the the return center sign so people wouldn't get confused on the other side of the building. So some of it is simply directing people to different areas, services that we offer. Reusing existing signage.
Right. Wasn't there a sign, I mean, I used to go to donut dip and park there. Isn't there a parking sign or something or wasn't there there on that side of the building, the East Long Meadow side?
A sign. By zoning, but by, by rules, we have to have some parking signs. There's a handicap sign up on the side.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. But I remember there was a sign. I just don't remember what it says. Was it just parking?
At front, there's, at front, there's one or two handicap signs on the side, on the side adjacent to Villa Napolitana. There's, I think, four Cityline parking, only signs that we required a variance for at one point, three maybe.
But what was the sign on the donut side, the donut dip side facing East Long Meadow?
I'm not sure there is.
There was at one time. I don't know.
Could have been. There is a sign that says bottle and can redemption here, I think.
Right, that was on the, on the Springfield side of the building. Because that's where you use to return the bottles, I believe, right?
Right.
That's where you do return the bottles. But there was the sign, there is the sign, which is part of the ask, which is on the donut dip parking side of it across from what's now called.
Is that what that sign that you have, because you have a picture on your pole sign and behind that picture, you can see a sign?
Yeah, that's the one.
Yes, that's the one. It's the same, it's the same type of sign that, Mark, that you referred to on the.
Other side of the redemption.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, well, I just, because those hadn't been mentioned, that's all.
Again, I have to take responsibility for that, thinking that, again, it wasn't branding, it was existing signage that wasn't, wouldn't impact. But obviously, I was wrong. So they are wall signs.
So, Mark, what relief is needed here to?
Well, I think what they're looking for are variances to allow them to repurpose the signs under, they're mending, I guess. I mean, the roof sign that says Cityline, I'm not sure you're changing in any way, shape, form, manner. It's just enough, it's based on the number of signs that are allowed at the location. So you have two roof signs by having that. You had two roof signs in the past and they want to repurpose basically the donut dip sign to a cold beer sign. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
And typically, you only have one that's above the parapet. In this particular case, they had two because you had two different tenants in the past. Now you only have one tenant. And they're proposing to reuse that sign to do cold beer and asking for a variance to allow the cold, the two signs to exist. Before, it was granted because you had two different tenants and it was to identify the location of the two tenants. So where the donut dip site was right above the entrance to where you came into the donut dip. And the city liquors was, I mean, was, you know, both on the side end and the front, but identified where you came in for city liquors. So now they want to keep two signs, but now they'll both advertise just the one use in the building. That is there. And that's the one, frankly, the cold beer sign is the one I have the most problem with. Because I think you've got enough other signage without that sign to meet the requirements before the variance was granted because you had two different tenants, providing two different services and stuff, and they're entitled to be identified. And you could, and that was the purpose of putting it there so it was clear. But I'm not so sure. The cold beer sign, in my opinion, is a hardship situation. You know, I understand you want to repurpose the sign, but I don't.
Mark, could you help me understand how, how a variance relates to the kind of relief the petitioner seeks? I mean, you know, again, I'm coming from another town.
Well, they were granted a variance or seeking to amend the existing variance that was given for the two signs to change the donut. Because typically, you only have one sign on a building, roof sign.
No, 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 I understand that. What I'm getting at is that, you know, I come from, I come from an experience where a variance, you know, related to topography and soils, and we've had this conversation. I, it seems to me that something like this would be an exemption or a special permit or, or something other than a, I just don't understand how it can be a variant. Well, if it was placed under a variance, I guess you have no choice but to amend the existing variance.
That's what I think they're doing because it was granted initially as a variance. I believe the two signs, two roof signs were granted as a variance. Part of the problem is where the building's located and the lot size and what they have for footage around to be able to place signage. So they utilize the top of the building instead of putting extra signs in different zones where the donut dip and the split with the liquors was one spot and that was one ground sign. But then to really just differentiate the two, there's really no other place to do that. So they use the upper roof is what my guess.
And I, my view of the whole thing, I guess, would be that to the extent that a variance was granted to give them relief so that they could deal with two tenants and a building or a wall or property that didn't lend itself to that, I think that's fine. But I think that once the necessity for that use is, no longer exists, that the variance should not run with the, you know, it should not run with the land in perpetuity if it isn't needed because it, you know, it sort of derogates from the intent to the bylaw to begin with, the way I look at it. But that's just my opinion.
I think that's a remarkable attitude with. That's where I was headed. I mean, I think the other signs, frankly, they're there, they exceeded. I don't know, were they, Bethany, were there variances granted for the number of signs and the size of the signs in the past?
I was just looking on the Hampton Register of Deeds and I don't see anything recorded on there, but it might have been under a different name. So you might need to do a little bit more hunting.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had old records because I didn't see copies of the variances. Do you know, when you looked at that, Harry, whether or not there were variances issued for the number of signs?
And I don't know. I mean, this really came from the direction, we applied for permits through Kevin. And he directed us, you know, you really need to go for a variance for all the signs that you're requesting and one because of a sign on top of the building and so on. So I don't have the knowledge of, you know, existing variances for the pylon sign. I have a feeling the pylon sign was not because it, you know, you had two tenants.
Yeah, I think you probably were fine.
Right.
The whole combination was the total square footage of all the signs. When you added them together, you know, I guess that's the issue. And I don't know whether that, that sign alone, I'm not sure. I don't, on its dimensions, I don't think exceeds the square footage that's required.
The, if you're speaking about the cold beer that's 42 square feet and it does, you're right, it does not, nor, nor does the pylon sign.
Like, none of them by themselves violate anything, but when you take them all together, you've got all your footage covered.
They do.
And so I guess my concern in terms of the ones that have been presented is I have a problem with the cold beer sign taking the place of donut dip because I think the whole purpose of that sign before was to identify, you know, sort of the location with the second tenant. And there's no longer two tenants. So I don't think that the hardship continues so that I wouldn't, I mean, that's my gut feeling for that sign. I frankly don't have a problem with the other signs. I believe there was some sort of a wall sign where the, above the entrance, I can't remember what it was. I've been in the package store, but there was something up there. I take your word that it was a Bud Light sign. It's not there now, but there was some sort of a sign above the entrance there. And, you know, where you're putting the, the new sign.
So, Corbin, the, the sign that says fresh beer, fine wines and so on, you said there was a Bud Light sign at that, but was that even an entrance back then?
To the corner of the building, isn't it?
No, it's on the, it's on the corner of the building, if you will. There's a flat side to the corner that faces west. So if you're coming back into town, that's where the sign sits. It's always been a window in my ownership and I believe way back to when it was a Willy's dealership. That was installed by the Williams Distributing.
Yeah. There was a sign there, I remember, is what I'm saying. And you're looking at, take, I'm not sure that was an ever permitted sign, just was put up there, I believe. I don't know that there was any.
It's electric, so I believe it would have had permits and all that.
Okay. I don't know. It might have been just plugged in so that I didn't know whether or not.
No, no, it's hardwired. It's.
Okay, it is hardwired. I, you know, I don't know when I got in.
Yeah, they had, they had a program 15 or so years ago when they were installing those signs. But it was a, it was a major install. And to your points, I kind of agree with everything you're saying on the cold beer sign. And the intent is not to rebrand. There's plenty of Cityline up there. And I think with repurposing the signage that we have with, with your permissions, we don't really need anything else up there. The concept of the cold beer, it's eight letters, as is donut dip. And donut dip, if you look at the images in front of you, has that iconic donut in the O, which I always really liked. It's like the first, the first thing you see when you come into East Long Meadow. And you think about, if I say the Citco sign, what do you think?
One more square.
Exactly. It's iconic and it gives you an instant location. That's what I want. A little pop with the cold beer. That was the concept behind it.
It's, it sounds great, but I'm not.
Dan, I totally understand. You voiced the best, you voiced the best argument against it. So I really can argue with you. That was the concept. Is what it is.
And I guess, like, I haven't calculated without that 42 square feet, do we still need the variance at this point? I haven't added up all the square footage if we took out the cold beer, the former donut dip and just took the square footage for the new sign that's going to be above the window below the Cityline Liquors sign that's pre-existing.
Yeah, Mark, you would, you would be at 66.7 square feet, so below the 100. You'd be fine. The pylon sign is, let's call it 49 square feet and the, the former Bud Light sign.
The other one put us above it. So if we take out that sign, I think you don't need the other variance.
Correct.
I mean, that, that's my, my feeling. I think you have a roof sign. And with those other signs, I can live with it. I just couldn't think of cold beer. I thought that was a little bit overkill. I understand what you're trying to get, get at, but on the other hand, a lot of other people would like some pop in their buildings and might like a fancy sign, but we've got to be careful that we don't end up with.
I understand that.
Fluctuation. So I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions?
So the ground sign that's up there now, you're essentially not changing the size. You're just changing the face of it.
When you say.
The ground sign.
The ground.
The ground sign that's there now that's changing the city line to get rid of the donut dip, that's going to remain the same size as it was before.
Just new face.
Their limit is 35 square feet, but now it's a pre-existing non-conforming, which has already been granted. So that really, I think in that case, Mark, then it wouldn't be, they don't need anything. There's an unchanging, anything else, just the face of it.
No, no, I don't have a problem with that at all. It's, before, they were looking for the variance for the total because you have to total all the square footage of all the signs. And with all those signs, it would have exceeded the total. That was the issue. So I didn't have a problem with that sign individually, and I don't have a problem with the others as long. But one of the questions I had is, in the calculation of the square footage, do we have to then add and give a variance because of the redemption signs? That was my, that was why I was asking those questions.
Yeah, no, no.
I, I don't think you need it for the parking signs. But I am concerned that you do need it because you're advertising, you know, the fact that it's a redemption center as well in the, in whether those, the square footage of those two signs in the, I guess you're going to move it on the west side of the building?
Yeah, Mark, those are, yeah, those are less than 12 square feet. So we're still okay.
Okay. Well, that's, I just didn't, I didn't know what the square footage and I just wanted to make sure that we didn't exceed it. And then you have to come back here and guys are turning it down because when I add up all the total square footage, you're beyond the number that you need. That's all.
Yeah. Fair question. Yeah, they are. The two of them at 24 plus the 49 plus the 18, we're still.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. So anybody else have any? Anybody else have any?
Mark, the only thing is you want to make sure that nobody else from the public wants to comment.
Yeah, well, I I just wanted to to make sure that, is there anybody here opposed to this petition?
There are no other attendees.
Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna ask if anybody has any questions. And we have a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Motion to close public here.
I second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Now I'll take a motion. If someone wants to basically, basically say that we will. Not grant the variance for the cold beer if that's eliminated. I I don't believe you need a variance. I think all the signs will now meet are preexisting and. Fall within the the parameters of the sign ordinance without that cold beer beer sign. And allow the new sign to go in, all the signs except, I don't know what you want to call that sign, the cold beer sign. And that the donut can be removed. As a condition on the. The permit, I do believe that with that, I think. I don't think they need a a variance, but I don't have a problem with the the new sign below the city liquors. Sign for the fresh beer, fresh wines, full lottery mass, you know, full liquor, mass lottery.
I'll I'll support that. I'll I'll second it if that's a motion.
Yeah, I guess it is. I'm not supposed to be making motions as the chairman, but.
I'll I'll make a motion that that the board grant the relief necessary to allow the petitioner. To erect the one new sign that we've approved. And that's, and that would be the extent of it, since you're.
Yeah, I think it modifies the other signs as shown and.
Sure that you get all, you know, you get it right, because.
Yeah, I mean, I I think I just want to approve as a condition that he's he's allowed to. Move the signed bottle can redemption on the west side of the building. To another location. Is that going to be, is that going to remain on the west side?
There is, there's one on the west side now and there is actually one on the east side. So Corbin, are we?
Are we going to eliminate one of those or are we going to keep both of those and relocate one of them?
It's going to come, the the one on the east side will no longer say bottle and can redemption. That will move to the west side, which is where the bottle and can redemption are.
Okay, and so that'll be removed altogether, that sign then, the one on the east side.
Yes.
Okay. So that would probably be based on that. I would just have that being part of the. The deal that we struck that basically a condition that the cold beer sign not allowed and the donut dip sign be removed. That the east side redemption sign be removed. And that they're allowed to, you know, put the new sign. I guess, is that facing west? I I assume the the fresh beer, full wines, full liquor, mass lottery, that's facing west.
It's kind of northwest, but west, west works.
Yeah, west, that that side of the building and that they remove the redemption sign on the east side of the building.
Are you going to have dimensions associated with this?
Per the the dimensions provided in this, you know, in the proposal here. In the packet.
My concern here is not so much what what we're, what we're, I think we all agree on what we're, what we're doing to to allow the petitioner that. To to do what he wants to do here. I just, I'm I'm a fan of decisions being written well. So that when future petitioners appear before us waving poorly written ones in hand. And and claiming relief is deserved under them and I've been there. That's all I'm concerned. I just want to make sure we're clear about what we're.
Yeah, I think by eliminating the sign, we're we're denying the variance with the square footage. Because you're eliminating the sign.
Right.
And we're also eliminating the second sign variance, roof sign variance by admitting that. And we're making it now comply. So when I, we're really turning down the variance. And allowing the other signs to be erected and because they fall within the parameters of the sign.
You're turning down a variance and allowing another variance to be amended.
Amended, right, to allow these other things to happen, so.
But once we turn down the variance with respect to the cold beer sign.
Correct.
Then there's, then they don't need a variance for all the other.
That's what I'm saying. Basically, they don't need it for any of the other things, but you know, I just wanted to make it clear what they they said they were going to do. And we're approving the sign.
They're, and they're better off that they have a decision that reflects that in case somebody challenges it or who knows what.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think we're turning down the variance for the two signs. Above the roof and by in having the donut dip sign, cold beer sign removed. You won't have the square footage exemption, so there's no reason for a variance any longer. For the total square footage of signage that's allowed.
Okay.
So how about this for a motion? How about the the, I I move to deny the request for a variance. With respect to only the cold beer signage. And make it clear within this motion that all other relief requested within the variance is is approved.
Yeah, I don't think they need a variance. I think two things is one, we deny the variance and and this sign has to be removed. So we don't have something still sitting there as a sign, you know, because you run into freedom of speech and all this other stuff. When you start trying to regulate what a sign says. So I just would prefer to have the sign removed. And if they 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 decide to reconfigure it to make it a two or three tenant building again in the future, then they can come back. You know, seeking a sign for the that tenant.
Yeah, Dan, Mark, I agree, and I think Dan made a good point, though. If we, if we're, if we're not clear in the, in the denial for the variance. And it was, it was a complete package.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
There could be confusion on what what everything was fine.
Right.
By the way, I thought the creativity around the cold beer was really, really neat. I thought it was cool. I wish you all the best. I just had trouble getting to the substantial hardship. But I.
No, the hardship argument and and Dan's argument that at one point in time, it was probably established because there was no other place. As you said, Brian, that you could advertise and distinguish the two businesses from each other. That makes perfect sense.
So I think that's why it was.
On the map like like Fenway, but we'll do it next time.
So, all right, so how about, so we can go this further, Mark, because it gets to make it easier with the whole packet that we're including. Is make a motion to deny the variances requested that includes the cold beer sign. With condition that they they proceed with reconfiguring, reconstructing and removing. Relocating other signs on the building as they exist and as proposed.
Right, well, I would like, I'd make it.
Not to exceed.
The hundred square feet. So that basically what the the things I would look in the order is one, the denial of the variance. For the the total square footage sign and denial of the second roof sign. In terms of it and not only deny the second roof sign, but require that that sign to be removed. And then allowing them to reconfigure and add the signs as proposed. So that they can reconfigure the pylon sign, install the new sign, the beer, full liquor lottery. Sign on the northwest side or west side of the building and have the ability and take down the. East side building, you know, the redemption sign on the east side. And they're allowed to move if they need to on the west side, the existing, you know, as long as it doesn't exceed the existing. Permits and stays within the. You know, the purview of the square footage, if, you know, as long as the size of the sign remains the same. I mean, they may want to make it cleaner, neater since it's new. So I don't know, you know, they're just going to move the existing sign they can, or they may want to spruce it up a little bit.
The the discussion that Corbin and I had, we would be sprucing up a bit.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying. But I don't have a problem with that in relocating the one on the west side if you need to relocate it. To a location on the west side that that's in there that they're authorized. I assume, is there going to be a separate door for the redemption center?
Yes, there is.
So I assume that that's going to be by that door.
That's correct.
Okay, so and we have just asked it to be relocated to wherever that door is going to be.
Yeah, and to make one of the conditions easier, the donut dip sign is actually down.
Okay.
You don't have to put.
Okay, well, I just want to make it clear that it was there in the order. So if somebody ever comes back and says, hey, you didn't order it down. And there's nothing of the record indicating it was down. So I'd rather just have it, you know, not anything above the roof line be rewritten, the sign be removed. And that way we don't have to deal with it. Okay?
So Mark, questions, since, since the cold beer variance has been denied, which kind of. Affects the square footage variance.
Right, well, so you don't need it. So we're denying the variance because it's unneeded. And I'll make it clear, that's why we're denying it. Because now the signs without the cold beer sign there and being eliminated fall within the total square footage. So we don't need that variance.
So are are do we need any variances then, since the cold beer has really had a domino effect?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't think you need the variance. I'm turning it down because you didn't need it. There's no hardship because you. You meet the requirements and can do the other sides.
So we we would then follow the normal procedures with Kevin, Kevin Duquette in terms of applying for the permits for.
Correct.
All signs, pylon, cold, the 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 one in the northwest face and the redemption sign.
Correct, right. The redemption sign should be part of it because it is advertising a service and takes some square footage and. You know, it's when you, when you, I don't think anybody ever probably calculated that when they did the calculations of the overage before either. And so I just want to make sure that doesn't cause a problem in the future. You know, because what ends up happening is if you put a small tenant, you have a much smaller location. You're now limited the amount of signage that that new tenant potentially could have. And now he's going to be forced into a variance. But I'm not sure you're ever going to repurpose that building into a two, two unit building at this point.
It's entirely possible, but it's not in the plans right now.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to deny the variance for square footage for signage. And to include the removal, which it has been of the donut dip sign and will eliminate the cold beer sign. In effect, will allow them to continue. Without the requirement of a variance to install their fresh beer, fine wines, full liquor, mass lottery sign. Move the redemption center sign from the west side to the east side to the appropriate location of the.
The west side will be moved out altogether, or the east side will be, will be eliminated. The west one will be moved to. A location by the redemption door.
And that should satisfy all the requirements without exceeding.
Well, we also would turn down the variance for the second roof sign.
That's, yeah, that's why I initially deny all the variance for the roof sign and the square footage.
Yeah, yeah.
Removal of the donut dip sign, which is already been removed.
Yeah, I think I think that's clear. Do we have a second on that? Okay, all in favor. Fran, you'll probably have to, let's go by, I'll do a roll call to make it. Fran?
Yes.
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 Charles?
Yes, and I wish you all the best.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Mark, yes. So it's been granted. As I said, we'll write it up. But hopefully get it appealed, appealed, filed with the town clerk in the next couple of days. And then as an appeal period, I can't imagine anybody's going to appeal it unless you guys, you know, want to appeal it. There's nobody here, but theoretically someone could appeal it.
And Mark, is that, is that twenty twenty calendar days or?
Yes, twenty days unless it falls on a Saturday or Sunday or a holiday. Then they extend it to the next business day, but it's from when it gets filed with the town clerk.
And the town clerk will send Corbin and would send me some type of notification that has been filed or do I, do we?
I think Bethany will probably give you a copy of it.
Yep.
Okay.
It'll have the stamp from the town clerk, so you'll know when the appeal period. I mean, you can proceed, but since it's been granted at your risk. And start doing the work now. So he can issue a permit if you're willing to take the risk. In the old days, you couldn't even get the permit.
Okay, so we we could go forward and 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 send Kevin the the permits and and then wait the twenty days. We don't take risks. It's.
Yeah, no, I understand, but there's a, there's a theoretically, somebody could come out of the woodwork and file an appeal. So maybe there's another liquor store in town that may not like you guys and say, hey, you're getting this outrageous and file an appeal. Do you know they weren't here tonight?
Understood.
So they have any other business? Bethany?
No, this is it.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, it's unanimous, motion approved. So thanks, everybody, for participating tonight. I hope it was relatively smooth. It was a little complicated. But I wanted to cover all the the bases around this thing.
Thank you all for your, for your Monday night. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks for working through the complications. It's not an easy one. And please, everybody come down to City Line. It looks great. It's been a very long year getting it reopened. But I think you'll be super happy with how we ended up rebuilding it.
Yeah.